All right. Thank you for joining us tonight to learn about the candidates that are running to represent our community for a four-year term on the Alhambra City Council. In addition to the candidates who have agreed to participate, there are a number of people that I would like to thank for this voter education event. Sponsoring organizations include the Alhambra Latino Association, Alhambra Preservation Group, the Asian Youth Center, ColoradoBoulevard.net, Grassroots Alhambra, and Visa Boosters. Representatives of these organizations are responsible for making all arrangements for this broadcast and for promoting it to the community. Thank you to all of you who worked so hard to make this happen. I'd also like to thank our translators who allow us to host a more inclusive event, and the League of Women Voters. They are our impartial moderators and volunteers tonight. They are responsible for screening the questions presented by the public, moderating the forum, and timekeeping. We are grateful for their guidance and for their strict adherence to their mission of voter education. And again, for those of you who are just signing in now and need translation assistance in Chinese or Spanish, please look to the bottom of your screen where you will find a globe icon. That is the interpretation function. If you click on it, you may select your language of choice. And if you're using your mobile phone, you'll find three little dots next to the word "participants", and that is where you'll access the interpretation function. This upcoming election represents a change for Alhambra voters. This is the first city council election since Alhambra voters, Alhambraans voted in 2020 to pass Measure V by an overwhelming margin. Measure V included four elements. It created a $250 cap on campaign contributions to candidates. It banned contributions to candidates from developers, city contractors, and political action committees. It increased transparency by requiring that all candidate campaign finance reports be posted on the city of Alhambra website, and it moved Alhambra from an at-large voting system to a bi-district voting system, which means that voters in three districts will be selecting a candidate to represent them who is registered to vote in their own district. Tonight, you will be hearing from candidates in districts one and five, so let's get started. Please join me in the flag salute. May we see the next slide, please? Thank you. Place your hand over your, right hand over your heart and begin with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now I will turn this event over to our moderator from the League of Women Voters, Dorothy Keen.
Thank you very much, Chris. Welcome to the Alhambra City Council Candidate Forum for Districts One and Five. We thank the sponsors and also the candidates and you who are attending via Zoom for your participation. My name is Dorothy Keen, and I am a member of the League of Women Voters Pasadena area, which includes Alhambra as one of the San Gabriel Valley communities that we serve. I'm not a resident of Alhambra, so I will not be voting for the city council and have not publicly supported or opposed any candidate. The League's mission is making democracy work by building a community of engaged, informed, and participating voters. Facilitating candidate forums is one way we advance this goal in our local communities. We study and act on public policy issues, but we never endorse or support candidates or political parties. Sponsors have not endorsed any candidate in this forum and have had no input into the selection of the questions for the candidates. So before we begin, I would like to introduce the rest of the League team, if they can be seen on the screen. And that is, we have Karen Roberson, who is the timekeeper. And Karen will be showing your paddles in a little while. Thank you, Karen. We also have Jean Buneagle, who is one of the question sorters. Is Jean showing on the screen? I hope so. And Jane Wallace, who is one of our question sorters also. So we thank all of you, this wonderful team from the League of Women Voters. And so now we're going to go on, and I'm going to ask that the screens show the candidates. In the November 8th election, there are five candidates competing for two seats on the Alhambra City Council. And I hope your, your district is showing also on your, on your screen. Candidates competing for a seat representing District One are Ari Gutierrez Arambula. So everybody can see you. And Catherine Lee. Has Catherine appeared yet? Think she's still on her way. District One candidate Stephen Sham has declined to participate in this forum. And the two candidates competing for a seat representing District Five are Adele Andrade Stadler and Jeffrey Gomez. Jeffrey, I guess Jeffrey's here. I'm not seeing him, but Jeffrey, you're here. Great. All right. The term of the office is four years. Oh, good. That's a better view so we can see who's here. So I'm asking those participating via Zoom to enter any questions you have for candidates in the Q and A at the bottom of the screen. We're asking that you do not use the chat function. That is merely for our League team to use. Our team of League volunteers are entirely and solely responsible for screening, editing, the questions that are submitted. And please note that questions are sorted only to combine duplicates and eliminate any that in any way attack a candidate. If you feel your question has been misinterpreted, please submit another. Due to the time limitations, not every question will be asked. Also, I would like you to keep in mind that while you are voting for a representative from your district, it is important to know the view of all candidates, as all who are elected will be making decisions that will impact all of the districts in Alhambra. Therefore, I will be asking questions of all of the candidates. So here's an overview of the process and flow of this evening and the rules of the forum, which have been agreed to by each one of the candidates. Candidates will have one minute to make an opening statement about themselves and their candidacy. The candidates will be speaking in an order based on a number drawn prior to the forum. The timekeeper, Karen, will keep the candidates informed of the time remaining and will hold up a yellow card showing that there are 30 seconds left, and then also holding up a red card to show that their time is up. So do try to keep your eye on the timekeeper as you are all speaking. After the opening statements are completed, each candidate will have one minute to answer each one of the submitted questions. And only questions will be accepted. No statements will be accepted. A question may be directed to one candidate, but all of the candidates will answer it. If there are several questions on a similar issue, they may be grouped together by the question sorters. And questions must deal with the issues of the election. No personal references or attacks will be allowed on the part of questions submitted and on the part of the candidates who are being questioned. And if a question is given to a candidate, it is expected that the candidate will answer the question from his or her point of view, not trying to determine how another candidate would answer the same question. So again, each person is going to have one minute for an opening statement. And at approximately 8:15, we'll stop the Q and A, and then we'll hear a closing statement from each of our candidates. So are there any questions at this point? Okay, good. Thank you. All right. With that in mind, I am going to invite, has, did Catherine Lee appear yet? Is Catherine here?
You have Catherine with us.
I beg your pardon?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, you are?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Catherine. Is your camera on? Oh, here you are. I see you. Sorry, Catherine. Yes. Catherine, I invite you to make an opening statement for one minute.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone who was a part of this meeting. I appreciate this interview, this opportunity to speak my mind about who I am as a council, elected council member for First District. I'll start out with 2018, when I was elected, I was an educator in our school district and also had experience representing the Alhambra Teacher Association's unit members as a leader. And so I brought that experience into the city council, and I, I feel that I've been very consistent with that philosophy of representing the residents only, and the residents' priorities are my issues, and I have no other really special interest when I, when I function as an elected official in the city council. And I have some goals I'd like to achieve, and unfortunately, I ran out of time. I thought I was able to achieve them the first term, and people have advised me that, no, you really need the second term to really see us through. So that said, I would like, I'm seeking reelection, be reelected for the second term. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Ari Arambula, District One.
Hello. I'm running to deflect a complete takeover by special interest background dealers attempting to circumvent Measure V. Leading up to the election, we were not sure who would run. All along, my neighbors and I were concerned developers would run their own candidates, and we would run it. Now I'm running to represent the homeowners, the residents, the constituents, our neighbors, who love the history and charm and the character of Alhambra and want to preserve it. Alhambra has a number of other quality of life issues that need to be addressed, including traffic management, pedestrian safety, creating affordable housing so that people who work in Alhambra can afford to live in Alhambra. And we need to coactively support our small businesses so they not just survive, but thrive. These problems got worse with the incumbent, and we anticipate nothing will change if she is elected again.
Thank you.
I hope to share more information in due time.
Thank you very much, Ari. And Jeffrey, from District Five.
Good evening, my fellow residents and neighbors in Alhambra. My name is Jeffrey Gomez. I'm running for a city council, Fifth District. I want you first to understand why I'm running. The simple answer is that our city needs better direction. Just look around, and we can all see the terrible traffic, the out-of-place and dense developments going up, and the rising crime. It makes me mad, and it makes me upset that our city, that this is our current reality. We need to change course. The city council isn't hearing us because these problems continue to spiral out of control. How are we to have a democracy, a city government of, for, and by the people, if they can't even find the time to answer our questions? The answer is, we can't. So armed with my education in political science and my long work with several federal government agencies, I decided to run for city council. And so I'm here before today to say that I hear you, I see you, and I have concrete answers to the problems that plague our city. We've all had enough of the political double talk and empty promises. The time for change is now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And finally, we would like to hear from Adele Andrade Stadler.
Yes, thank you. I want to first thank the League of Women Voters and all the sponsors who have organized this event. This is true democracy in action. My name is Adele Andrade Stadler, and I'm the first Latina mayor to serve in the city of Alhambra. Under my leadership, we pushed through a progressive agenda that included inclusionary housing ordinance for affordable housing. We have a historic preservation ordinance in the hopper. We banned the sale of flavored tobacco with students from Alhambra Unified, a bike plant, bike plan implementation and AT-BUS route and ridership study, an aggressive hiring of police officers adjusting the base salary to be more creative. We have the creation of a grant specialist, and I was the chair of the census committee that involved numerous community-based organizations. The communications professional to provide better outreach in multiple languages, which is what you're doing tonight, and I value that greatly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. And now we're going to move into the questions from the electorate. And the first one question I'm going to ask Catherine Lee to answer, and the question is this. How do you feel about increased business development in the city? What problems would you foresee, and how could they be dealt with? Catherine? Is your, are you unmuted? I think yes. So, so timekeepers, start her now rather than, okay, thank you.
So I, the overriding topic is about our businesses. The pandemic, I think hopefully it's going to, is behind this to some extent. Our city staff, according to the city council direction, is, has been very, very hardworking in terms of speaking to the property owners on the commercial streets in getting in the right tenants so that our residents will have better shopping experiences and dining experiences. So that has been something that we have been working on as a group, as a team, and it's our current strategic plan for the year. And I, I do foresee still some problems with redo, being again, people still are resorting to online shopping. But again, with the gasoline prices going up, I'm hoping that people are going back to more of the brick-and-mortar stores and have a personal shopping experience. As far as I'm concerned, based on my observation, it's a pendulum swift.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, but the red card was shown up.
One minute, wait too short for me. I didn't need to speak a little faster. Thank you anyway.
You're welcome. All right. And the next person to answer that question is Ari. Ari, be sure to unmute yourself.
Could you repeat the question? I didn't hear it initially.
Yes, I'd be happy to. How do you feel about the increased business development in the city, and what problems would you foresee, and how could they be dealt with?
Okay, so the, the point needs to be a qualification on business development versus development generally in terms of building more buildings that we often refer to as development. There's a lot of rezoning happening, especially during, you know, right now with our housing. Our requirements have increased so sharply. So there will be, based on the housing element recommendation, a lot of new buildings going on, and the question is, where will those buildings go? How high will they be? And, okay, 30 seconds. And also in terms of developing business, such as small businesses, we need to do a lot more of that. There, you know, especially East Main Street has seen a lot of closed shuttered businesses, a lot of empty storefronts. We need to be able to do something with that in a very proactive way. It constitutes a loss of local jobs and revenue for the city. So it has to be resolved.
Thank you very much. All right. Jeffrey?
Well, look, the increased business development, we need to break it down into two categories. There is the developments, the big developments obviously going on with housing, and then there's developments with, with just businesses. So the biggest generator of revenue in, in Alhambra right now comes from sales tax. That's, those are businesses. We got in $29.7 million from that. So we need more development in terms of businesses. We got to focus on small businesses. We got to fill up those empty storefronts. Problems I foresee with that, you know, when you, when you do zoning, when you allow one thing, you have to allow certain other things as well. So we need to really focus on our zoning. And that's really the key to fixing it all, because we can't just go out and just say, okay, we're going to have every business out there. No, we need to focus in on what we're doing and allow small businesses to come in. But at the same time, we also need some anchors. Our biggest two providers in the city are Target and Costco. We should keep that in mind. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Adele?
Yes, I think the one word that everyone's failed to mention here this evening is COVID-19. When COVID-19 hit, everything shut down. We were unable to actually come out of our houses for a time until we got it stabilized. And one of the things it did was it crippled our small businesses. They, everybody went indoors. And, and so what, what the city decided, along with the council, decided to do was we saw how that, that our businesses could eventually move outdoors and create areas where they could come out and provide the same services that they were providing. And I'm speaking mostly of the food services, which are most, are most businesses that we have. And so by doing that, it allowed them to go back to a sort of a new normal. We really have a brand-new person who was taken off at the chamber. He is doing some incredible work, reaching out to a lot of the businesses. And we're going to revitalize Valley Boulevard with new businesses. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. And so our next question, we're going to give it to Ari first to answer. And that question is this. We are all aware of the need for additional housing in Alhambra, especially low-to-middle-income housing. What changes from the previously proposed housing project would you like to see in any newly proposed large-scale residential projects? All right, so.
Okay, so first of all, the, you know, actually, the, the governor just signed a bill last week, I believe, where we can now more easily build in, in shuttered commercial spaces, strip malls and that sort of thing. So I definitely, and I am actually involved with the general hospital reuse project, and I've really learned a lot from that, and in terms of being able to re-purpose existing buildings and not having to build by new ones, it actually would go faster. It would solve the problem of buildings that are empty and storefronts that are empty. And it would also, because it's less expensive, would make sure that would help assure that affordable housing in those type of developments that the recent government signed it. So I think we, we need to look at all those opportunities that the state government is providing to us and maximize them. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And Jeffrey?
We need affordable housing. There's no way around it. The state is mandating it, and we have to build it, but we have to build it in a smart way. If we do mixed-use buildings where they have commercial underneath and then residential on top, that's a great way to increase business and to get in compliance with the state. However, we got to do it in a smart way. We don't want to build these huge edifices that are just filled with, with people. And so we need to do it in a smart way. We could do that on East Main Street. We're there. We are, we're already doing it on First Street with the 50-unit affordable housing. There are two more projects, totally 90 units that are in the pipeline right now. So we just need to do it a smart way. We have to comply with the state. And there's no way around it, but we got to do it in a smarter way, because right now, I think it's, you know, if you look at the general plan, there really isn't a plan.
All right. Thank you. Adele?
Yes, thank you. As mayor, I introduced the inclusionary housing ordinance. I was excited about that, and in 2020, we actually created it and now have one in place. It requires residential development of seven or more units to provide 15% of its total units to be sold or rented to low- and moderate-income households. In addition, the alternate, alternative is also allowing an in-lu fee, which provides off-site units. Five projects, two selected to provide affordable units right now, two low-income, one moderate. And in lieu, we are currently looking at $186,995.25. Those are projects in the hopper, and I think the two supportive housing projects mentioned were under our leadership. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And then Catherine, would you please answer?
Yes, thank you. Before I was elected in 2018, we've had a few mixed-use projects on West Main. None of them had affordable housing units, and the school district experience declined Rowan, and those developments did not bring in families with children. So that was a huge flaw of that type of project. So this current city council, as Vice Mayor just spoke about, we approved inclusionary housing ordinance, which is systematically trying to increase our supply of affordable units, housing units, that includes low-income housing as well as moderate-income housing. And it's, it's going to slowly build up our inventory that will be offered to our residents, our renters, and people who work in the city. So I am very proud of that, and I look forward to see that coming to fruition. Fruition is going to take some time to build up the supply as well, so we need to be patient with the, with the ordinance that's in place currently. And again, I personally like to have 20% of developed, large developments to set aside for affordable housing units.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. We're ready to move on to another submitted question. And the first person who will answer it will be you, Jeffrey. And the question is this. Do you support the adoption of an ordinance that will establish a legal framework for the designation and preservation of historic buildings in Alhambra? And please elaborate.
Yes, I actually do support that. The reason is, if we look at Senate Bill Nine, where people can build four units on their property, on their single-family residence property, there is an exception to it if we have historic districts. However, we don't have any historic districts at this time. So, you know, people who are against it, that's something that we need to look at. We're, we're working on it right now in the city, but they're late on it, frankly, and we need to, we need to get that up. But yeah, we actually, we need to designate some places as historic districts. The city is one of the oldest cities in Southern California, and that's why people love it. People love the community. People love the small-town feel to it, and we need to maintain that. Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. And Adele?
Once again, the new council that took over in 2018 saw this was an incredible goal for us to achieve. We are in the works. We have selected the, the people who are going to be doing the surveying of all the, the properties that fit into this historic, and we're on our way to have our, our first historic ordinance. I'm proud to have led that charge. I will continue to see that through, and I thank you very much for the opportunity to address that.
Thank you. And Catherine?
Yes, I absolutely support preservation ordinance, which is in stage two right now. It took, I was told it took many years after residents requested from the previous city council that we finally, that this council has made that move to push it forward, and I'm very proud of it. And I think that Alhambra is a beautiful city, and I'd like to continue to keep it that way. Architecturally, we have beautiful homes, commercially as well as in the residential area. So it is very important that, that the council right now has that ordinance in place in the near future. Thank you.
That was the 30-second one that was held up, but if you, if you wanted a little more time, fine. If not, if you're finished, that's great.
Yes, I could make one more statement. I personally would like to see that our preservation ordinance, which eventually will be approved, that includes commercial architectural buildings. We have archdeco buildings on Valley Boulevard, and I personally would like to see that being preserved as well.
All right. Thank you very much. And Ari? Are you unmuted, Ari? I would almost encourage all of you to stay unmuted.
Stay unmuted. Yeah, thanks. Yes, I definitely support legal designation for historic buildings, also historic art, any murals that we have, any special, like those ones at the post office and all that good stuff that we recently found. But we also have historic neighborhoods, and so there's a, something to look into around that. For example, Linda there's a, something to look into around that. For example, Linda Rasta Park and others. And there's also land that is part of the history of Alhambra, and that we could be looking further into that. And in terms of the indigenous history of the, of the city. So yes, I absolutely support it. So many beautiful buildings that we need to save. We need to designate architecture that is part of, identify that for Alhambra, and make sure that continues.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Now, we're going to move into another topic, having to do with the drought. And I'm going to address the question first to Adele. And the question is, as we are all feeling the rising temperatures and the lack of substantial rainfall, how would you, as a city council member, address the drought with respect to Alhambra residences, businesses, and public spaces?
So I, thank you for that question. This, Alhambra, the current city council actually have two projects that we are working on in pocket parks that will actually have water that we reclaim and utilize again to keep the pocket parks green. In addition, what I'd like to see us do, moving out of what we've done, but what we need to do is actually reach out to our state legislators and ask them to give incentives to manufacturers who create all these wonderful stones and, and, you know, replacement ornaments that we can replace our lawns with, but at a reasonable cost. Give them incentives so we can have a lower cost to, to change out our front lawns if we choose to do that. And that would be something that I really would like to see us work on. So low cost landscaping and conserving water simultaneously with utilizing the good, good plants, right? Deciduous plants. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And Catherine?
Yes, right now, we have the water, the drought restriction already in place, based on the state guideline. I would like to see that maybe we would have workshops and putting incentives for our residents to start looking at drought tolerant plants on their property. We do, we do love our green grass at the front yard, and we have beautiful neighborhoods. But for the long run, we, we are in California, so water is, is a scarce resource. And so I think that down the line, we have to look very closely into reducing our green grass in the front yard and plant, using some drought tolerant plant tastefully, so that we can all work together in making sure that we are reducing our water use and save the water use for essential needs such as drinking and so on and so forth.
All right. Thank you. And Ari?
Yes, you know, just so happens that one of my customers is the Department of Water, that's part of the water district. And there's so many programs that they offer through cities to be able to replace your landscape. And you can actually get the entire project funded. But only Alhambra does not have that. And that's been a problem for many years since I tried to, to apply for that. And also, I love that, you know, the reclaimed water is important, but I think we need to think in terms of, for example, the golf course and all city space, all city parks should have that. It should be a priority. And there's also programs to plant trees that are shade trees, and where it can even help property owners pick out shade trees and figure out how to use those best, so that homes are shaded more, and so that it creates shade on sidewalks and that good stuff. So, yeah, big, lots of existing ideas that we could carry over to Alhambra.
Thank you. And Jeffrey?
Look, Alhambra is very forward thinking. We do have water infiltration tanks that sit underneath the park construction on First Street, and actually underneath the Ross on Chapel. So Alhambra is really ahead of the curve with that. I met with the, the, the water department last week, and I talked with them about this. What we need to do is, look, we don't have the expertise within the city to implement programs, but we could, we could, by reaching out to nonprofits, like tree people and other organizations that focus on drought resistant plants and trees and things of that nature, that the city just does not have the capacity for right now. And we really need to look into that, because these are big issues that affect a lot of people, because nobody wants to have an ugly dead lawn. So we need to find out ways that we can have better property looks. And that's by reaching out to other people and other entities that have the expertise with it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We are ready to go to another question, and it will be first directed to you, Catherine. And it is, what services and resources can the city provide to help immigrants and refugees gain self reliance?
That is a very great question. I had a conversation with someone just recently about that. Number one, the, the currency council, starting 2018, we already are looking at translating city documents, which includes our city council agenda, which is increased transparency as well accessibility for immigrants who are not proficient in English. In addition to that, I like to make sure that we start looking at having workshops or town hall meetings with translators of different languages are necessary to teach our immigrants, our immigrant residents about the functions of the cities and how to navigate the system and how to receive services in a timely manner. And I, immigrants overall, I'm an immigrant, you know, I moved here a long time ago. So I know that the difficulties of trying to figure out the system, what department to go to, who to call, things that we take for granted, but for immigrants, especially new immigrants, it's very difficult to, to find the right person to ask the question. So there's a lot of things that need to be in place, but one of which is.
All right. Thank you very much. The, the red card was up there. Sorry. And Ari?
Yes, I was recently at the library and saw a, a sign for naturalization classes, which I thought was great. But then I know people who need those classes, and they don't know about them. We, we really need to be a lot more helpful in, and more creative about how we communicate with our constituents. I know they're using, they have a new website, they have social media, but is, you know, is it really reaching the folks that need it? There should be some sort of an outreach specialty in terms of immigrant services. I do know folks who, who host to people from, from Ukraine. You know, is there a protocol for that? You know, that city hall lobby is very empty with a security guard there. That could be used a lot more proactively to help receive community and guide them through the city.
All right. Thank you. Jeffrey?
Just like dealing with the drought, dealing with immigrants who first come here, they need help, and we need to help them. And there are a lot of services out there with the nonprofits, again, that can help us. But we need to reach out to them. They don't know that these things are going on. So we, as a city, need to reach out to them and ask them for help. We need to have that humility to say, hey, we can't handle all this by ourselves. Immigrants have a hard time navigating the system because they're scared of it. We need to open up our doors to city hall. We need to show people how things get done. We need to have translation. We need to have workshops. We need to approach them with open arms and show them that we can talk with them in their language, and we are here to help them. And that's how they become self reliant. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And Adele?
Can I just ask you to read that question one more time?
I'm happy to. What services and resources can the city provide to help immigrants and refugees gain self reliance?
So, you know, one of the, one of the things that I think the city does, along with a lot of the nonprofits that are part of our, connected to our, our library, like the Asian Youth Center, and we have a dream center across the street at Alhambra High School that, you know, just supports all the families that are there and by, with a variety of legal services and English classes and for their families. And it's just a tremendous organization that I am a part of, and I am so proud, proud to be a part of, in addition with the Asian Youth Center that does some tremendous work for, not just the city of San Gabriel, but for the entire San Gabriel Valley. They're constantly doing work, workshops that are available for everybody on Asian hate crime, on how do your students can navigate that, and your families can navigate the school district system. And then the partnership with the city is incredibly important, right? We are their partners as well.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And the next question has to do with schools. And, and I'm going to ask Ari to answer first. How can the city improve and increase services to schools and support teachers and students, especially in the areas of physical and mental health, job opportunities, and housing?
All right.
Yeah. So I hope you can hear me. I tell you, the, the, the parts of schools and students, you know, one of the things, especially with Nevada, you know, I happen to be from South Texas, so it's especially poignant for me, is protecting the schools from crime. And we need to make sure that, that we have protocols for that, practice sessions for that. Just want to put that out there. And in terms of students and jobs, you know, was happy to interview with students from Alhambra High School and shared with them ideas that we have about, that I've been in, worked with in other school districts around making sure that they have, they know their own rights, and that parents know their rights, in terms of preventing the schools to prison pipeline. So there's, there's special programs that could be brought forward, and we can help students one.
All right. Jeffrey?
What we do with students, what we first need to do is we need to remove the stigma that's associated with mental health, that's associated with trying to find a job or trying to find housing for that matter. We can't be patronizing to students with coming down looking like a big old city, like, oh, we're here to help you because you need help. No, we need to approach these children, these are future, with loving, open arms. And we need to approach them on their levels. We can't be a big city hall that wants to pat ourselves on the back and say, oh, look, we're doing a good job for kids. No, we can't have that. And that's happens way too often in our city. You see, you see people taking pictures saying, oh, look, look at the good things I did. No, we can't do it like that. We need to make this normal, and we need to allow these children to come and find services that they need without any of the patronizing and without the stigmatization of it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Adele?
So one of the things that many of us who are part of a mutual aid group of teachers, community members noticed when we, when COVID hit us, exactly what was going on in our schools and with our students, right, and their needs. And so what we did was, in partnership with the teachers, was actually reach out to students and their families to make sure that they had food. People lost their jobs. They lost one job. So that was incredibly important. But what I, what I, I learned is there is something called community schools. And community schools are actually schools that look at the entire child, the whole child. Does that child need healthcare? Does that child need food? Does that child need mental health assistance? Does that child need services or even a job? Our parks and recreation, we hire students from Alhambra High when they're in college. You know, they're doing their first couple of years in college, and they want to be part of Alhambra, and we hire them. The city hires them. So you'll see, and also our police department does an outreach for them as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Community schools.
And Catherine?
Yes, thank you. That is a long list, and the is picking a lot of things. Of course, our students, our constituents. And I heard about one thing that you mentioned is jobs. So we definitely, as a council member, I certainly have worked with our Chamber of Commerce and have met a lot of business owners locally. And it will be great for us to work together and produce job opportunities for high schoolers who are eligible to work and as a starting point, and eventually maybe be hired full time. And as far as housing for, for our teachers, we, the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance that we had just mentioned earlier, I like to see that we open up, because the people that work in the city, they're on the priority list already. So I'm hoping that we can offer our teachers who are working at Alhambra School to have affordable units either for rental or for sale, and so that they don't have to commute to work.
All right. Thank you. Okay. And the next question is going to be directed to you first, Jeff. And the question is, in a way related, in the interests of public health and safety, how can the city address vaping, especially among young people? How can we ensure the safety of students at schools?
That will be, again, the, the effort of our Alhambra Police Department.
Wait, 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 wait. Did I get myself confused? I think I said Jeffrey would be the first to answer that question. Jeffrey? Is my, am I on? Are you all hearing me? Jeffrey? I'm sorry?
I think Jeffrey's frozen. Dorothy, I'm going to go on getting him back online, but maybe we could start off with another candidate.
All right. I'm going to start with, with Adele then. Adele, do you want me to repeat the question?
No, I think I get it. You know, one of the things that we were able to do is work in tandem with the Alhambra Unified School District students and a lot of, a lot of people in the, I think it was American Cancer Society, and we actually banned, before the state, we banned the, the sale of flavored tobacco. Well, vaping is also an issue, and it's right in line with trying to curb that. So it just makes more sense that maybe we would just expand our ordinance, which bans that, that particular sale to potentially include vaping. Vaping is really easy to hide, you know, also in classrooms or in places, you know, kids can do it real quickly, and all you see is a little puff of smoke. So, or puff of whatever air. So, but I would be interested in seeing us maybe expand our current ban on, on sale of flavored tobacco, and maybe add vaping to it as well. Thank you. In collaboration with our police department. Thank you.
Thank you. And Catherine, would you answer the same question, please?
So I believe the question was, how do we, how does the city ensure assisting the safety of our students? Is that correct?
That is correct. But it also, it also had as part of it, how can the city address vaping, especially among young people? Yes.
So definitely, the Alhambra Police Department has offered education to our students by going to campus. They range from lower grade to high school age. So that program will continue to, to exist. And perhaps we also evaluate the effectiveness of those programs that have been in place for years. And so vaping unfortunately has become more and more common among the high schoolers, as far as I know. There are areas around the campuses that are, seem to be a place where those students should be there. So again, it would take a lot of education, a lot of monitoring, to make sure that our young people are, try to stay away from vaping. It is a very difficult problem to resolve, but we're going to try our best.
Okay. And Ari?
Yeah, so for safety of, of young people, you know, I happen to have a daughter who's eleven, and she's starting to notice things about people smoking and that sort of thing. You know, education is important, and sort of a public education campaign through the city would be nice, through the police department would be even better. But you know, one of the things that helps kids deter from that type of activity is sports. And so one thing that we haven't been talking about here is parks and recreation, and being able to enhance our sports programming, which I know we have some good stuff, but I know that the county just recently lowered fees. Which I know we have some good stuff, but I know that the county uh, just recently lowered fees and created more opportunities for students to participate in sports. So I would like to see a little more of that. Um, I mean, for example, one of the things that uh, that I've noticed going to city halls is these kids skateboarding right up front. And it would be nice to have a skate park for them.
Okay, thank you very much. And Jeffrey?
Please, the question, please?
Uh, sure. Uh, let me see, here, where am I? Uh, in the interest of public health and safety, how can the city address vaping, especially among young people? And how can we ensure the safety of students in schools?
Uh, you know, vaping is, is a really big deal right now and you know, education starts at home, it really does. We need to get across to children that vaping isn't just because they have flavored tobaccos that it isn't uh, safe. It isn't fun. We gotta, we have to demonize it and we have to tell our children that this isn't good for them. And you know, if we can get programs to come into the city to talk about it, uh, students learn better when they're with their own cohort. So if we can have children telling other children the horrors of vaping, that would be even better. And there are programs like that out there and we need to access those programs. We need to go into the schools and tell them about this because it's a horrible, you know, it's a horrible problem that's happening right now. And we need to address it as a city head on. And we can do that with police, we can do that with the schools. We just have to have the gumption to get out there and do it. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And I'm glad we have you back. Oh, all right.
Apologies.
I'm uh, no, no problem. I, I, I'm going to uh, just so, because my chart's already set up, you'll have to put up with me. Uh, Adele, I'm going to give, have you answer first for the next question. And that is, uh, what are, what are Alhambra's plans for emergency preparedness in the case of an earthquake or a major fire? How can they be improved?
Well, that's a great question. Um, we actually have a system in place with our fire department and our police department um, where they have connections to other cities. So there's partnerships, I think it's the Verdugo Hill, um, Hills Partnership. And so many, um, because you and I know this isn't just gonna happen to us and we're not in a little vacuum at helping, it's going to, if it, if something happened, this emergency happens, we're going to have to rely on our neighbors uh, next to us. And so they already have things in place um, to be able to deal with many of this. But also we have cert training, right? So we're training um, retired electricians and uh, folks that have other specialties that may be skilled work, um, that may help. And these cert uh, folks uh, go through these classes and they are folks we reach out to um, when these emergencies happen. They automatically know how to, how to um, how to collaborate with um, the police department. Um, they also, we've also, they also have much better technology now, um, the officers as well as the fire department to connect with others. Um, this is, this is someplace where we can improve with a neighborhood watch.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Uh, and Catherine?
Yes, thank you. So uh, to answer that question, just three uh, different responses. Number one, we are following the current county system of emergency preparedness. We do have a very uh, extensive uh, booklet that um, that I have asked our city manager to provide. And that is very complex. So, so the second response is that I like to see that we make that transparent to our residents at large. What is the procedure in case of earthquake, um, in case? I don't think I had a minute, I'm sorry. I think I had a thirty seconds.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay.
She has another thirty seconds, right? Uh, Karen, you have another thirty seconds, go for it, Catherine.
So just to finish that, so I like to make that emergency procedure transparent to our residents at large. Um, it doesn't have to be detailed, but in summary, so that our resident know that we are prepared for all emergencies. And the third response to that question is, again, I like to see that our, uh, our fire department has been training volunteers, but because of pandemic, uh, it went into a halt. So I like to see that to resume and to train more volunteers around the city so that they can be our, our eyes and uh, ears and uh, assistance during times of emergency.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, and Ari?
Yeah, so um, you know, the city actually does have a notification system uh, that people can sign up for through, for, for agendas and other city notifications, but we don't have one for emergency situations. So it would be good to enhance that. Um, I happen to be signed on to the one for San Francisco, so I know every time they have a uh, you know, something happening at this park or that park or some uh, big shutdown they have. So I know it works. And um, so I think that's something that, you know, using technology that we could improve our own ability. This police uh, had a neighborhood watch and they collected emails and phone numbers. But I didn't see how that was uh, connecting the neighbors. The police connected to them, but not the, you know, there was no collaboration between the, the actual neighbors and helping to train them to uh, to help each other. Uh, so, and I know that uh, that there, there's neighbors um, on my side of town that have done that sort of work in the past and would be willing to do it again.
Thank you very much, and Jeffrey?
All the plans that Alhambra has right now for emergency preparedness mean absolutely nothing if we can't implement them. And we've seen in the fires that consumed the Angeles National Forest years ago that some of these plans just don't work, they're just not based in reality. And that's why we need training. There were a lot of problems with cross communication happening between agencies, people who are on different frequencies, and it created a lot of chaos. And I think with our police and fire particularly, they need to do a lot more training. We gotta provide that funding for them to be prepared for this. In addition, we gotta train and show our residents how to be self-reliant. Um, there are a lot of programs out there. I mean, we have Caltech, the foremost experts in the world on earthquakes, right next door where my sister works. And they can help us as well, but we need more programs and more implementation and we need to push our residents to learn to be self-reliant. We have the great Shakeout, we need more programs like that.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, the next question I'm going to first address to Catherine. And it is, currently Alhambra does not have a neutral free press or media. What can you do towards that end? And how can important local information and non-commercial news be disseminated to Alhambra residents?
Uh, we used to have Post Advocate and I remember having um, seen that years ago. To bring that back or something similar to that of a mute, of a neutral interest, it's important to me. Um, right now, we just have around Alhambra, which is essentially still a circulation. And uh, we, the residents are relying on different other electronic um, newspapers such as Pasadena Star News, ColoradoBoulevard.net. Um, so I like to see that we can, within the city, um, maybe mobilize some with our interesting writing. I personally, I met one already, to start a group. Maybe they'll, they'll start writing, uh, interviewing people and writing about the city. So eventually that they can grow and uh, it's gonna take time. It's gonna take the people that are wanting to do it. But I, I'm hopeful that people are out there in the city that are wanting to do so.
All right, thank you, Ari?
Yeah, so um, so one of the problems is, uh, number one, the Chamber of Commerce is a private entity. It used to carry things like the, the uh, crime reports and all that, but it no longer does. And uh, and it doesn't actually carry any information about what, what's happening at City Hall other than the mayor's short little letter, uh, feel-good letter that goes up front. Uh, there are other newspapers, there are, in fact, the uh, Pasadena Star News, the Colorado Boulevard, which also has a print version. There's uh, Beacon Media, the, and there's the Alhambra Post Advocate, which both the Beacon Media and the Alhambra Post Advocate are adjudicated for the city of Alhambra and should be used for legal advertising. If they were used by the city for the legal advertising, then they could afford to cover this thing in order to uh, report and have a reporter there and all that. You know, other cities, all the, other small cities have that on a regular basis. So I think uh, uh, Alhambra should need something to put in that, uh, in that regard.
All right, thank you, and Jeffrey?
I work in the media, I'm a journalist myself, and I, I see the problem that we have in Alhambra. And the problem is that we cannot attract an entity here that is not partisan in some sort of way. It's very difficult um, to, to bring in a newspaper that's, that has no interest to them. Um, as such, we do have all these different newspapers out there, but we need to do more outreach with them. Why, why reinvent the wheel? Why waste more money when we can reach out to the LA Times? We can reach out to the Pasadena Star News, we can reach out to ColoradoBoulevard.net. We can't, we can't just rely on Alhambra, the uh, the, the source page that we get all the time. That's, that, that's not enough. But we, as a city, we need to reach out and do more to show people and showcase our city so more people are interested in it, so more journalists want to write stories about us. We have nothing to write about, there's no incentive for journalists to come here.
All right, thank you. Adele?
Yeah, so well, I, I love the idea, um, the more to read, the better. Um, we do have the Alhambra Press. Um, I, I usually pick up a copy of that, it's City Hall. Um, I think it's also the Post Advocate is there. Uh, and Colorado Boulevard is online. We're seeing more and more, um, you know, news online. And I think we need to, you know, accept the fact that that's what we're going to be utilizing uh, more and more. Um, I, you know, I have an LA Times subscription. I also have the San Gabriel Valley Star News subscription. Um, and Alhambra is in it all the time. The city uh, is always as um, supplementing or putting in a, an article or two. We also have a great press person that we hired, who's uh, in multiple languages, doing outreach to Instagram and Facebook. And also each Alhambra Police Department and the Fire Department have information online.
All right, thank you. Um, let's see, we're ready for another question, I'm sure you're all delighted. Uh, somebody mentioned something about wheels, so I'm looking for a question about wheels, not really. The question I'd like to be answered first by Ari. And the question is this, Alhambra is not very bicycle friendly. What would you suggest to make Alhambra safer for biking? Such as bike lanes, as well as for other alternative means of transportation? And be more, uh, and be more pedestrian friendly?
Right, uh, that's the key. Uh, you know, we in um, on East Main Street, we did a walk with a bunch of our neighbors to understand what uh, what the needs are and what examples there are of what is pedestrian friendly and what is not. Um, having the uh, the wheelchair ramp, the accessory ramp going across the drive-through is not pedestrian safety. Um, also, you know, uh, I know that there's a uh, uh, effort around Vision Zero uh, program. Uh, Vision Zero failed in LA and Vision Zero failed in San Francisco. So we need to take a look at the best practices of, of those type of programs and truly implement. If we make it the city pedestrian safety safe, then in turn, it becomes uh, safer for, for bike riders and all that. Although I would love to see a track uh, uh, to, between parks, for example, uh, for biking uh, and, and to uh, major employers, so that people would be encouraged to use their bikes safely.
All right, thank you. And uh, Jeffrey?
Alhambra has a bike lane plan coming, uh, but the problem is, it's not coming soon enough. Um, it's, it's in the pipeline, but that's not solving our problem today. And the problem we're having today, I ride my electric bike all over town. Um, perhaps you've seen me. And it's not safe and I don't feel safe. And the plan that's gonna be coming up does very little to address the safety issues that people have. If people don't feel safe, they're not gonna use it. You could put bike lanes there all you want, all over town, but if they aren't safe and people don't think they're safe, they're not gonna use them and it's all for naught. We need dedicated bike lanes, we don't just need little lines on the road. We need dedicated safety barriers between the, the pedestrians, the bicyclists and the cars because anything else is just way too dangerous right now. And you're taking, you're taking big risks if you're doing that. And that plan that's coming up, it doesn't have anything like that. And we need to, we need to relook at that plan. And what we could do right now, we need more enforcement. We need the police to stop people from speeding or driving too close. We need that enforcement so people can get in their mind that there are people who share the lane with them. It's not just about cars.
All right, thank you. And Adele?
Yes, thank you for this question. Um, so yes, we are in the works with a bike and pedestrian plan. We had, we took money from the seven-ten from MTA to actually set it aside for the plan. We are still doing outreach and we also just hired folks to help us create this plan. Um, people like BikeSGV, who are professionals and nonprofit in the field of understanding what it is. For the last, um, well, actually two out of the four years, we've had six-two-six where we've cut off all traffic from South Pass to Alhambra into San Gabriel. And it's incredible when you stop traffic and you see what really can happen when people cooperate from city to city to city. I see that happening, our kids flood, you ride their bikes every day. If you look at Alhambra High and you walk into their corridor, the first thing you see are a series of bikes. We need to put a bike place in place for our students so that they can have, utilize those so their parents stop dropping them off at school, right? Let them use their bikes, but create a safe place for them to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, and Catherine?
Yes, thank you. So as mentioned uh, before, um, we do have a bike lane or bike path plan um, in place. We've had, had hired a consultant to get that going. And I like to see that if we do have that, when we have that in place, one of the, the, um, the must for me is that it will connect to metro locations so that people with a bike to the metro link stations, which we don't have any in Alhambra, so it'll be somewhere in Pasadena. So we're gonna get to work, for me, that makes sense. However, the challenge is that we can ask for a bike path. However, we are also juggling parking on the streets. We're juggling the, the developments that, uh, that the state is wants every city to build more development, so therefore gonna produce more cars that have to park on the street. And there's more traffic along with that. It is not a simple uh, formula. Just because we have a bike path, I cannot at this point see that we can rush into implementing that because of the traffic.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. And uh, I'm having a hard time deciding which question to ask since we're getting so close, but I hope I can ask two more. Um, what are, and, and I ask you first, Jeffrey, to answer this. What are your strategies that you plan to use to engage the community? So that as a council member, you truly represent your constituents?
I've lived in the city my entire life, forty-one years. And I am running for city council because I hear my neighbors, I hear their complaints about City Hall. I have my own complaints too, and that was my impetus for running. So becoming a city council member, I'm not gonna change that. My door is always open to people. This is what makes government run. I'm not gonna go sit on some ivory throne and be far away from people. We need more engagement, that's what we don't have right now. We need more engagement with our representatives. That's why I'm running, because I had a problem reaching my representative. I emailed and called, never got a response back. And that frankly got me upset and I said, I'm gonna run, and that's why I'm here. So we need more engagement, that's absolutely important. That's what democracy is all about. And we need more participation. We gotta have the, the meet your neighbor event, awesome, amazing. We need to have more outreach between City Hall and residents. That is what keeps it all together and that's what makes this community amazing.
All right, Adele?
All correspondence goes into City Hall and the city manager reviews it. I looked, I asked the city manager if you had written anything and there's nothing on record, Mr. Gomez. In terms of engagement, absolutely. You have to be involved and you have to be a volunteer, right? I volunteer and advise for so many organizations that when it comes time to engaging, all we have to do is connect with each other and reach out to even more folks. This city council has done more to re, to engage with their communities with respect to the seven-ten freeway. You may not like it. You may not like the results of it, but we're engaging for the senses. We did a great job for redistricting. We were out there all the time, and we went into Zoom because of because of COVID. And you're right, we we could have done a better job once COVID is over, but I'm not quite sure COVID is just over yet. So our engagement has to remain on Zoom in part, but our engagement is important to each and every one of us. Thank you very much.
All right. And I want to remind all of us that we answer the question for ourselves. And Catherine, would you please answer the question?
Could you repeat the question? Sorry.
Sure. What are your strategies that you plan to use to engage the community? So that as a council member, you truly represent your constituents?
Thank you. It's 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 not anything complex. I step out of my house. I go visit senior centers, which just so I can engage the seniors here to to for them to talk to me about their issues. I walk around the businesses and I have neighborhood watch groups and also informal groups just to talk to people face to face. So it's nothing complex. People can text me, email me, and call me. Nothing after eleven, of course, but those are just simple things I like to do. Just be accessible, be an accessible leader. I've been doing this during the first term. I like to continue to do that during my second term. It is very important for me to be responsive. If someone were to email me or text me or just call me or write a note to me, I would try to make sure that I I would take care of that issue immediately, usually within a day or the next day. So that is something that simply that I've been doing, and I would like to continue to do that.
All right. And Ari?
Well, you know, I live on the East Main area, and one of the things, a project that we've been working on out there is the idea of an old town Alhambra. And we've been having community meetings. We've been having them outside on the grass because there is no community space for us to meet. So we need to address that issue. Also, the fact that people are willing to meet, you know, bring their own care to a park space. These people are interested. They want to be able to talk and share about what their concerns are. So having gatherings like that on a regular basis would be a priority for me. And I'm also relying on the network of our of our neighbors to be able to share with each other. You know, we have, it's not Google groups, but like text groups and that sort of thing, so that we share information with each other from a safety standpoint, the last dog, you know, the crash near my house last night. You know, we can share more information with each other in person and and find other ways to communicate.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to ask one other question, only because it appears to be a really important question to ask. And and I would like it to be addressed by Adele first. And the question is, as a teacher and a parent in the community, I am concerned about the rise in gun violence and mass shootings facing communities and school. As a city council member, what will you do to prevent violence in the schools? Adele?
Oh, that's a great question. I I think there's there must be partnerships between city and schools. And it's those partnerships that are incredibly important when it comes to keeping our families safe. Certainly, having, you know, metal detectors work to some degree, but really, really, the the education needs to be out there. We need to make sure we're paying attention to our students who are having problems. They need to have mental health coordinators working with them. They have peer counselors back in the day, and they don't have peer counselors anymore. So students are not recognizing things that they could be recognizing. But in terms of safetiness, we need to make sure that I think the school district does actually a very good way of checking that people who come in do not have any kind of a record. But gun safety, you just need to keep your eyes and ears open all the time.
All right. Thank you. Catherine?
When I was a teacher with the Alhambra School District, we, the teachers had, teachers that had trained.
Sorry, Catherine, get closer to the mic, please. So.
All right. Let me start over. Is it clear enough?
Yes, now it is.
Thank you. When I was a teacher with the Alhambra School District and the Alhambra Police Department provided training for the teachers as well as staff in response to different types of emergency situation, including shooting on campus. So I like to see that become ongoing training for all staff and and teachers, if possible. And also refresher courses is a very, it is a very intense training. It was, I think, was two days. So that needs to happen and it'll continue to happen. It's unfortunate that we have gun violence on campus. And I I would like that to be addressed at the federal level and state level as well. Whether it's gun control law or other types of appropriate laws in place. But locally, again, the police department needs to work with the school district to train their staff and teachers as well as their students, how to keep themselves safe in case of emergency.
Thank you. Ari, would you answer the question?
Yeah, I actually touched on this earlier about about the Uvalde experience. And what we found there and what we learned in other environments like that is that there are so many different jurisdictions around police, you know, the city police versus the school police versus security that may be working in a building and all that. So there needs to be some coordination around that, number one, communication. And number two, what is, you know, in a true emergency, who reacts and who's in charge? That needs to be thought of. If we learned anything from Uvalde, we definitely have to do that. You know, the other the other issue is around deterring crime from Alhambra. We want to be able to address the issues with the, you know, it's called the police chief chief of, I always call it the broken windows theory about if you have dilapidated buildings and abandoned buildings, crime will come there. So we need to address that and as part of the big picture.
Great. Thank you very much. And Jeffrey?
Particularly gun-based violence is sadly really prevalent in our society, and I hate to see it. We cannot have another Uvalde happen. And the way to to solve this is we need vigilance. We need to have these hard talks with kids and their parents about what's going on, whether it's mental health, whether they need someone to talk to and expression. We need to have these resources. Alhambra has two full-time resource officers that patrol the schools. But is that enough? I don't know. It's a step in the right direction, but we need this community-based policing. We need these police to be in the schools, to know the children, and to be able to see when they're having a problem. We need that training for police, but we also need it for parents. We need it for their fellow students, and we need it for our teachers. With all these eyes on the school, it would make it a safer place. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And we have now, I congratulate you all. You have answered twelve questions this evening. And I I think the electorate is much more informed. And now I'm going to open it to a closing statement. I'm going to do that in the reverse order of the opening. And so I invite you, Adele, to give a one-minute closing statement. I I hope you're not frozen. Are you?
Yep, she's frozen.
Is Adele frozen? Adele, you're muted. You're you're you need to unmute.
She might be frozen.
She may be frozen. All right. You're going to help her out, and I can move on, can I?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, Jeffrey, would you give a one-minute closing statement, please?
Thank you. Look, Alhambra needs to change. We cannot have more of the same. That much is clear. We are headed down a dangerous path that is beset on both sides by political wrangling and special interests. We need to take back our city as residents. I'm committed to you all to deal fairly, openly, and most importantly, with your best interests in mind. Alhambra has been my home my entire life, and I want it to thrive, and I want us to enjoy it and it to be the crown jewel of the San Gabriel Valley. But we cannot get there by re-electing those who brought us down in the first place. We cannot get there with long-winded political talk. We need straight answers and clear goals. I do not mince words. I will tell you the truth. I will tell you when there are problems, and I will find solutions that benefit us all. Our community deserves better. You deserve better, and it would be my honor to serve as your city council member. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to Ari. Would you give a one-minute closing statement, please?
Yeah, although we can talk about it a lot tonight on the development, you know, the fact is, Alhambra, as we know it, is in danger. There are big developers and people who work for them, some of which are listed as supporters on one of my opponent's websites, who are waiting in the wings to take fully over our helping zoning and building plan. They are ready to build as many high-rise market-weight condos as they can. If that means building next to our single-family homes or really historic structures, then so be it. Many of you are watching this film tonight. We're involved in collecting our over six thousand signatures to get majority on the ballot. You campaigned and got a majority and won. All that work was to keep someone like Mr. Sam away from the Alhambra City Council. I need your vote to help protect Alhambra from overtaking of developers. There are many other issues to address, and we will address them, but I need your help to get elected first.
All right. Thank you. Adele is back with us. Adele, you're, okay, great. Adele, please give a one-minute closing statement.
Did you all wait for me or?
No, we went on and we're okay.
Well, that's not fair. All right. So thank you very much. Once again, I have proudly represented the City of Alhambra for the last four years. I have proven record of my work and steered the recovery of our local economy during the pandemic while engaging our community. I led the adoption of the first inclusionary housing ordinance that requires developers to include affordable units. I organized the largest food distribution for Alhambra and with the teachers of Alhambra Unified School District and volunteer to this day. I led the creation of the first community workforce agreement, which includes over a hundred labor unions to support livable wage jobs. I continue to address homelessness with compassion and humanitarian manner while supporting our neighborhood safely. I led the ban of the flavored of the flavored tobacco sales with the students. I will focus on attracting new businesses to Valley Boulevard, keep our streets and neighborhoods safe, engage our community to fostering involvement by ensuring strong outreach in multiple language to our immigrant community, find a balance between green space and water conservation landscaping, support multimodal transportation that includes pedestrians and especially for those with disabilities. I hope to serve you for another four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Adele. And now Catherine Lee, if you would give a one-minute closing statement.
Yes, well, thank you. In 2018, I was elected as the first Asian-American female council member and then became the mayor of Alhambra in May 2021 until the end of February 2022. During my first term, I voted consistently based on the principle of democracy. It's for the people and by the people. If we liked it, if re-elected, I want to further transform Alhambra to improve the residents' quality of life in all aspects. During my first term, I consistently represented residents' interests. Their issues are my priorities, not special interests. If re-elected for a second term, I'll continue down that path. It is my belief that this is what an elected official needs to do. And and there are some ongoing goals that I would like to continue in that includes increasing government and election transparency, limit high-density developments, continue to be an accessible and responsible leader, ease traffic, improve pedestrian and biker safety, and upgrade infrastructure. These are just among many of the goals I have for the for Alhambra. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you to each one of you candidates for your insightful responses to all the questions. I thank you for taking the time to be part of the forum. As stated earlier, the League's voter service goal is to promote an informed and involved electorate. We hope that this event has helped those who have attended to be better informed about your choices in this election. Now it is your turn to get involved, and you do that through voting. Please make democracy work by casting your ballot by mail or at a vote center and urge your friends and family to do so. If you find three neighbors that you can encourage to go and vote, you you will have done something very important. And remember, Election Day is Tuesday, November the eighth, and the deadline to register to vote is October the 24th. And also remember that if you have moved or any of your neighbors have, they need to register to vote again. And so there is something on the screen that is letting you know that mail-in ballots were sent, and you most likely all have them by now. If you don't, they will be coming. And we thank you for attending. Anyone who wishes to take a scan of these QR codes to get to the LA County site or the California site, and also to look at Voters Edge, which is a very good resource for finding out more about the candidates in all of the areas of election on the November eighth ballot. So with that in mind, I thank you all and thank our volunteers, both the sponsors and the League, for attending, and good night.